I don't understand.
My question is this is all part of the policy, can I do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So what I feel, Marty. This is what I tried to do, statefully respond to it and I need that from my phone company.
Your last name is Marty?
Yeah. Yeah, eleven zero nine zero. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. The only thing I don't have is a letter from you. Let me just show you one of the. Yes, we need it right in the residence. I'm just gonna use your paper.
Can I do it here?
Absolutely. And your email, I'm sorry.
I'm walking right by and I knew you were turning so you know which way to go.
Your email still in our path one.
Hi Kathy.
Hi supervisor, how are you?
Oh, good, thank you. Gotta be good. I like the little squib you wrote.
Oh, thank you. I tried to make it just a brief summary without being specific so if I intense people to look things up, you like.
I should tell you, I don't wanna.
Oh, what did I do wrong?
Throw rain on your parade.
Bill.
But last year when I was chairman, I would, I wrote a chairman's letter after every board meeting.
And I read it.
Oh, you did? You're the first one that's, you're the first one that told me they want to.
I made.
Don't let it achieve me of us or you'll.
I thought it was, it's like, okay. I did, I looked at it, I want you to know and I was very upset when I heard that.
That was disappointing.
It was, but you know what? I'm trying. And I will continue to try to get things out to the community.
Doing good.
That's one of the things I really.
I sent that stuff to April, did, did it?
I did, did you see, I put, I just abbreviated it, put the most important things in because like I said, they told me they're gonna give me a little small area. So I was trying to make, get as much information as briefly as possible in that little area. Okay, and I wanted to make sure, you know, and I, we did put the webpage in so that if they needed more information, it should be there so, you know, if anybody wants to put stuff on the webpage, they can do that too. I didn't do anything on.
Yes, I'm waiting, ready for you.
Okay, oh, it's updating, okay.
Well, I can get it on the computer.
Seventy-two percent complete.
He wanted his book.
I could do that for you.
Yeah.
Well, I could do that for you.
Well. I love that. I tried it three hundred times or it wouldn't come down. Please have a seat.
It's got ten percent more to go and you'll be ready.
I mean, but she can do it, I'm just saying, if you ever need it, I, I'm not, I'm not more than willing to help you.
Hundred percent.
Okay. All right, all right. So how have you been?
Uh, good. We.
The hell was that?
Jen and I were test driving a new automobile for her and got rear ended.
Oh, my God.
Oh, God.
That's gotta be a nightmare.
Well, luckily, the salesman, salesman.
Was riding with you?
Salesman was with us. And he tried like hell to get us to buy it anyway, but I'm, I'm thinking.
Once it's ruined, an accident, you don't wanna.
Yeah, I think I'll, I think I'll let somebody else have it.
Wow, what kind of car were you driving?
Ford Edge SUV.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, wow. That's crazy driving.
Oh, yeah, this girl was delivering pizzas and she was talking on her phone at the same time.
Oh, yeah.
Apparently trying to get directions or who knows what.
Oh, wow.
And it's not illegal down here to talk on your phone.
It's not.
No, it's not.
Texting is.
Texting is, but not.
Oh, yes. Okay, so he wants his board.
Yes, doesn't he has to go on the, oh, he has it saved already. Oh, that's not hard to do.
No, he doesn't, that's twelve fifteen.
He's got it into his.
I gotta get online.
Save it to the desk and then pull it over. I do mine even though I get this, so I know what happened.
Oh, I'll bet you he's not connected.
He should be connected to you.
Yep, get connected. I just wanna make sure before I jump through the hoops.
Kinda.
He and I.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
He was a wonderful guy. That'd be more like him.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what you're supposed to do.
I went upstairs, I couldn't find it, but Diane says she remembers seeing it also, so.
I'll get, I'll locate it, I, I know, I know, if it isn't up there, it's on my shared drive, I'll get a.
Can you give me a copy print?
Both of you want or just you?
Last thing I need is more. My.
All right.
Just one copy.
My office looks like a bomb went off in it, it doesn't need anything else.
I don't know if I can.
I'm trying to file.
How big it is, let me.
And it's been a nightmare.
I have to probably do a Dropbox.
Because I can't use the.
Okay, okay, so, I got it open.
You're not using the mouse at all, see, that's what I get.
All right, so I'm gonna left click. No, I don't like. Okay, so now I'm gonna open. Why is it not? He's right.
I am in B. Before anybody gets it.
Now, when you, see, when I do it.
You probably get through half the agenda before anybody shows up.
I click and I open it with Adobe, but it's not allowing me to do that.
Well, I usually go on my, to email me and save it that way, maybe that's what he has to do. He has to go on his email.
Can you get to your email? You know what, I got an easier method.
Okay.
Watch your, I mean.
Watch it.
I get in my budget.
I wanna answer your question.
I have all these things. They're all grouped together.
Well, the office part?
The creative preschool. I talked to one of your old friends today.
Is that where that new school's going? We haven't seen any plans on that yet, but yet I got all this information on Tetra Tech to, like, they've reviewed the plans like, okay, what am I, what am I doing? Is this the far entrance?
Yeah, see, this was.
Oh, they're going right next to the fire department.
My concern, so this is, this is the cut into Fairway Lakes.
The, the.
Griffins are on here, right?
No, the sushi is right here.
But we were thinking.
OK's down.
Yeah, yeah, oh, OK's right.
Okay, so you come.
You have to come down, we go a little farther turn in, it's the south entrance.
Okay, the south, all right.
And that's our access to the, to the pond.
I'm just concerned about the traffic, is there, is there, there's not a, is there a turning lane for here?
Yes, yes, but the trouble is, you pull out of here and wanna turn left, the vegetation, you're gonna get killed. There's no sight distance at all.
It's on this location.
It's right across from Timber, Timber Ridge.
This location and also the one that's a little further down. That's that office building, office building, used to be Gardner, the old one on the right, coming up, if you go straight, you go to Daniel's observ, like, coming out of there is a nightmare.
Oh, Commerce Lakes, oh, you can't see nothing. Well, that, that's one thing we have to make sure, there ain't no lining up on this road.
Well, and here's, so where's the.
Entrance is right here.
So the entrance comes in, in here, so I, here, I'm not so worried about it, it's coming in.
It's getting in and out of there.
Cause between, cause I'm, I do it almost every day.
Well, if you make it no, if you make it no left turn, they'll go down and make a U, so it's even worse.
Because you're gonna get a buildup between, let's say, at eight thirty-nine o'clock.
No left turn here, force them to go around and go out next to, at the intersection.
Well, and that would be beneficial if in the future there's light.
Or a light or something.
You know.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be much better, hi Stephen.
I mean, that's.
I'm sorry? Oh, well, that scratches out one of my deals, okay, thank you.
So, so originally, when there's a.
How you doing?
Pretty good, how are you?
Because I always have an.
You're a moving buzzin', somebody's buzzing. Yeah, they could make them easily go around and exit out that way if they wanna go left. If they wanna go left. It's a lot safer, you got better sight distance, but the issue is you got oncoming traffic, whereas here, you come out, you don't have to worry about somebody coming at you, well, I guess you could, Timber Ridge could have somebody. That's, that's, that's not that many traffic.
That, that might be something, it needs a little discussion, and is it easier to come out and let?
Well, how many students are gonna be here, what, how big of a deal is that?
But it's not, it's not the volume, it's between, really, eight thirty-nine o'clock is primary drop off.
What's I didn't already say, where's the ingress egress for the drop off? I, I don't see a flow pattern here.
I would imagine it comes in.
I think it comes in here, goes around like this and back down. But I don't see the, that, that's not an entrance, that looks like.
Well, that has to, that has to be.
That's gotta be the entrance.
That's gotta be the entrance.
That's got like a portico, I guess, over, yeah, that's.
And that's where, this is, and this is what happens, it's, now, at Brown, at Brown, they have a drop off, so you, you come in the morning.
Well, you go around the backside, Bill.
Yeah, you come around the back and then you come through and it's, you drop off and they actually come in.
They don't have enough room.
Well, cause it's, it's not, it's all separate, I mean, it's all together.
They don't get room to do that, that's why.
It's a nightmare, so this is, this is the most complicated thing and I, I don't know why they don't spend more time engineering the flow, because that's, this is where your bottleneck happens.
I didn't understand your last email.
And not only that, if you have a bottleneck, that means you're gonna have a bottleneck here because people are getting out.
Either way you go, well, no, you're not, if you come in, go around, you do not cross the traffic, you don't cross it, the only traffic you cross is people go to park. So the traffic flows real good, but you almost have to make them go, well, you could go across and turn and turn.
Well, that's another thing too, if this is, I mean, I don't know, that staff parking? I mean, we're, we're, we're staff, I mean, there's more than.
Let's see what four and five say.
More than ten people, I mean, they gotta have staff.
Shit, if you would read that, there, I can't read four and five. Okay, I can't read that. Oh, here it is, it's just, no, shit, doesn't any better. No, that's water, I don't know.
I mean, for one, it.
One way we weren't given this to be the, the. Tetra Tech.
Well, that's I'm trying to ask Chris. I didn't know where your street is fixed.
Well, I knew where it was at, I didn't know how they were gonna do it. I didn't know how, I didn't fit in.
Doesn't look like it, so where are these people gonna park?
I just want you to know that I made.
And then what is the look? What's their process for drop? Still out there. At least around when you come out, you go right, I mean.
You can't go left.
Right, you can't go left. Or you have to circle around, come out, the way you came in, and then you can go left that way, but even that becomes a little touch and go sometimes. And you're not, a light's gonna go over here, you're not gonna put a light, so I like your idea of, one's a light.
Anybody going left, that's go, go right, get left.
So my question is, with the. Oh, the DRI. But I have to, Chris, did you have some invoice you need to give me to pay? Okay, I just wanna make sure I don't leave without it, cause we gotta get, that's for the.
You mean limitation on what you can have in the evening?
I put one of those on a table yesterday and I put it down.
No, I'm not seeing anything.
And the table was wobbly and I had just taken the lid off of it and the whole darn thing went in my lap.
Yeah, I imagine that's all they have, is just that type of a limitation would be in.
And then there's a buildup, I don't know what these numbers.
Those are, those are so, pie in the sky at that time, they're destinants.
So that's just what it was, it was just what, an additional estimate was.
But there's, to my, to my knowledge, there's no limitations.
So I can tell you the basis right now, but I don't know if they're gonna make the adjustment, I think that's part of what the question is for today.
Hey Tyler. They got us good sales. Now, she loved it, it was a beautiful color, she wanted, only had eighty thousand. But the longer it goes, the more.
Uh, no, not for. The only thing that I've seen out of these guys. And they did have a little exhibition on that, but as far as like where, you know, parents, they dropped off stuff, they never.
You mean, they gotta have a requirement, they gotta fire traffic, looks awful tight to me.
It's a what size truck?
You better be a little.
You know, cause my stuff we're, we're doing now is new, and if you're coming out here, the left entrance on this side is a little hairy, left entrance.
It's right where that appears.
I did.
Yes, between, you know, probably eight and nine.
None, none, neither place is good. Stoplight at the intersection is, is coming, it's got to. The trail, it's right down.
South Carolina was gonna put a light in there.
They were either gonna do a lighter around.
They wanted to put it in.
So when they come out.
Turn red, when they turn out, get, but if you did one of those, you could make it a regular stoplight too, but that's not during this phase, that would be whenever.
No, I don't.
And how do you.
I like the yellow tee shirt.
It's just a number that the county gives, and so it's numbers where. So for every two hundred square feet of building space. That's what the proposed base.
I can't remember, one to a hundred or two hundred.
Oh, great. No, no.
No, no, no way.
He does multiple districts, so his. We don't split it like that, I can only tell you.
So they're, they're trying to coordinate with them, their entrance.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking the questions here, so.
I mean, outside of that.
Two hundred and twenty-five is the total.
It's not bad if you're going north. You're going south, lots of luck.
Even coming through, they have a, they have a drop off and they'll get out of the car for you, but if you.
Split it out.
A lot of times you gotta jump in the handy.
Go in the grass.
Or go in the grass, which is not ideal, and that doesn't like, they have that many more, I mean, hell, you've got twenty staff, where's that? So, I mean, yeah, well, I mean, you know, it's something that we can go back and ask them if you want. Yeah, well, I'll, I'll bounce and all, everyone else here, but, and that's just, the last thing we need is to complicate.
I mean, I can tell you.
That problem there, cause it's.
Well, or the other one is, no cars parking out there on that street like the school or charter, that's a nightmare.
And this is, for once, I would like to get in. I mean, you look at the charter. They are engineering but the charter that was district manager, this is ridiculous, you know, that creates tons of problems. In that intersection, I don't know how many accidents was in there over the past couple of years, but it's probably pretty good.
We're at.
At that intersection.
Yes. When we were doing the white paper, we had to have that report, we were gonna get everybody, that was just a couple of serious ones.
Because I sent this to April.
It could be a case. We can push back to the county, and I already might have to do it.
It was a lot, bringing a lot of numbers there. So we were trying to make sure we get everything.
Bill, I mean, they're probably going to end up with one there. But I mean, they're not gonna do it, I guess I'm trying to say is, they're not gonna make them put the light, you know what I'm saying? They have to build that parcel of school, I don't think they're required of them to do it, it's like a purpose to make them. No, but what I would look at is, I would look at.
That's, that's four hundred fifty thousand bucks to put.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Or is that what? Well, I mean, I don't know what the county does to, to validate.
Well, I hear right now, it's not, cause they aren't involved, but when they take it over, it's gonna be on their nickel.
Physical ability is the accidents that have happened there.
Oh, well, thanks, I'm Bill Guy, thanks for joining us. Yeah. People who live here come and make sure that they tell us how nice, how they wanna kill that place.
There's gonna be a change in every one of those cars. So, I mean, that's just seven heights, that's pretty, for my respect, so, I'm saying, that's, I don't know what.
More than I can tell you.
We only.
And responses were in the.
The CDD is not just the old gateway.
What the hell we talking about? Yeah, that drawing would help them a lot.
I mean, if you want, we can start putting the drawings in the.
Yes, I'd like, well, I'd like to see it ahead of time, especially if there's gonna be a discussion on it.
Cause I wasn't sure when you, I mean, that was my concern, officially changing all days, so, cause I wasn't sure, this is all just, you know, papers.
You mean off Gayway Boulevard?
Yeah, off Gayway Boulevard, I wasn't sure exactly where they.
Yeah, I was pretty sure they weren't gonna allow that.
No, they, I think the county's.
Here reductions, so here's.
That one was kinda short, that was like.
Is that the, that, that looks like what I saw?
I think the only thing.
Is that the person? That looked like what I saw about that second page or third page. No, there's another one, a little bit bigger, yeah, that's, that rings a bell, but I'll see what I got, you can have it, that'd just be another file I get rid of.
Yeah, I don't know what.
We can talk about it if you wanna ask how it's working.
Tony, Tony changed.
Yes, um, the pinch hitter, Tony's pinch hitter.
He's up next.
Yeah, he's next.
Put him in the hot seat.
Look at your financial statement, what you would, please.
Mr. Tyler.
See him try and run out the door?
Yes.
I was like this close.
I know, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Which page?
Rayne, Mr. Rayne.
First page.
The general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Not, not the first page of the summary stuff, but first page of the general fund.
It's a. Where like rocket sushi on the.
I know where.
Okay.
Where was?
Where like rocket sushi's at.
I know where there is.
Okay, so that same, that same place, so you go, like, go on Griffin Drive, you cross, get a little hard, go straight, there's an empty lot right there on the corner, it's one of those empty lots. There are, see, like a, like a school daycare right there on one block. I'm not sure if they call it a daycare or a preschool, one of them. It's a, if they date here.
More paper. More paper.
Yeah, just cause I bit Tony twice, doesn't mean anything.
But yeah, it's a, it's a daycare.
Page eighty-six.
Thank you. Okay, I'm there.
The last two lines on the revenue section. Stormwater road review fees and insurance reimbursement.
Right.
Help me out.
Which, what they are?
Yeah, what stormwater road review fees is, as a revenue item?
I'd have to check that April, I thought that was just the, the. The road review fees, isn't that a common occurrence, we just pulled it out? They used to be going into miscellaneous revenue, those line items, and we pulled them out so that we could see them, April wanted to be in the. April wanted to be in the chat.
And those, and those are actually all plan reviews. Um, it's too difficult to split them between what we're doing on the utility side and what we're doing. So plan review, all is in the general fund. And all the expenses are being recorded to the general fund and all the, all the revenues.
Are these from developers?
Yes, yes, it's the plan review.
Insurance reimbursements, I know what that means, but where?
I'm not sure which one, but.
Insurance reimbursements is like, um, a lot of times our lights get knocked down in an auto accident. And so we cover funds.
And you remember which one it was? Which accident or? We can look it up.
No, no, there's several. It's on, it's on one.
I just wanted to know what it was. I didn't need the detail on it. I hadn't, I didn't remember seeing neither one of them before.
There's been two or three of them.
Yeah, and that's gonna fluctuate, obviously. Hopefully there's none. But yeah, if something happens where we get.
Y'all had a hell of a party down there. Last week. That was a ball. Got a lot of interesting people. Thanks. Yep, yep.
Oh, I imagine, hopefully there's no.
Overheard conversation, sounded interesting, I just kinda butted in.
But Diane has the boat though of that stuff, trying to figure out. But you know, sometimes we don't.
Yeah, I walked in and signed up behind a guy that said something about C D D. And I said, okay, gonna follow him. And then I put another C D D and another C D D, so. We kinda come together for a while.
Sometime over the weekend and they don't like to really work with him like you can.
The C D D contingent. Yeah, learned a lot. That was, that was a class deal.
I, I was. Because you know.
Our, our company.
I was thinking, what is he, forty gold?
Twenty years since I retired, but, uh, we were thirty.
Does he have, it's not anything on this media, but he's.
Thirty.
Is that on top of the line?
That was a. Then we had. It is crazy. The biggest problem is who's going to come? And you're right, where you go. Our office was huge. It was in an area where we had plenty of them, which we did it after hours to where the other companies were. Yes, they were. So they, I was just, it was terrible. I just had that, helped that one. But biggest one is who's, who's going to, uh, show up and do you have enough of everything? And it, it worked out real good. We did it in the first week of June and doing, it was hot, but, you know. We had a huge lungs tent. And then we had big blowers outside, you know, cooling down, but it was fine. It was fun. Southside.
Well, and then the other.
It's fine.
Whatever you're charging for is gotta be market value.
Yeah, they have thought about you and.
This is gonna not give it to us. Oh, yeah. Yeah, where you gonna put the people? Yeah. Yeah, so that ain't gonna.
Yeah, so that would, we ended up switching, I think it worked out.
Instead of making your fee schedule, your discounted price, not charging your non-resales.
No, I do that as long as the market.
We did, we, we went out, so we went out and, um, bought like four, five storage facilities. See, yeah, so.
Is there a. Macia? Macia. Just one?
Can I turn that mic on?
Okay. Should I have it on?
How do you know it's on or on? Oh, okay.
On is up.
On is up?
Yep.
You guys all leave them on all the time?
That's, yeah, that's solely just for the meter. That's actually what's left.
And I. Cause I'm, now. According to my.
Light just came in.
Everything in black is positive?
No. But everything's on, I'm ready.
Or do I have to?
Everything's on brackets. Brackets. The reason why you put things in brackets.
We're getting close, so.
Two fifty nine.
I'm ready when you're ready.
Sheet and stuff too, I mentioned. But that's that. Or else I would do a furniture.
How are you?
If you can just drink her a cup of coffee. No, we, we.
Okay. April. I'm scared.
I appreciate.
It doesn't hurt.
Did you get one of these?
Yeah, I'd like to have one of those. I did not get one, so.
Oh. Get one, so. Did you get one? Uh, they could be there like four, I think.
I told you, yes. Okay. All right, so this, we don't.
Oh. Tell me I love having one of those. That's on the agenda, one of the new developments.
Cause you have a couple. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If you have a phone, please turn it on silent. If you wish to address the board, there's forms in the back where you sign in to sign up to speak to us. And with that, we will start to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Right now, we have one, Richard Macia. Build a bocce ball court. Richard? Should I get up to the microphone?
Uh, we, I represent and we represent the bocce ball group from Silver Lakes. And we've been playing over by the school in the softball field. And I think it would be very beneficial to Silver Lakes and also Gateway if we had a bocce ball court. I think it'd be well represented. You go into any of the advertisements for the retirement homes and that's the first thing they represent it. We have a bocce ball court, bocce ball court. So I would propose, I would like to have a bocce ball court, maybe build Gateway Park. And if not one, maybe two, because you're gonna have a lot of interest in this. A lot of people have been asking, why don't we have one here in Gateway? So you're gonna have a whole bunch of people that wanna play bocce ball, don't need lights, it'll only be daytime. So that's all we need. That's what.
And you have a, um, I guess we can, cause we have bocce ball in Stony Brook. But is there a certain standard, um, that you gentlemen would like to see in a, in a bocce ball court?
Can I handle this?
Excellent. Okay. All right.
Could I ask?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Sir, uh, would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Richard, last name is Macia, M A C C H I A. One one, two eight, three. Lakeland Circle. In Silver Lakes.
Do you have any idea how much it costs to build a or two bocce ball courts?
I went online, yes. The minimum that I saw online was fifteen thousand.
That's for two?
That's a, that's for one. That's for professional people coming in. And I don't know if you have people that will be able to do this and just buy the materials. So it'd be a lot cheaper doing it that way.
And who buys and owns and keeps the balls?
The Silver Lakes, uh, group, actually anybody that wants to play, if they wanna bring their own balls or anything, we can set schedules up depending on how many people are there. Then they can bring their own equipment. So they could keep their own balls and that's the only thing you're gonna need. If we have a bocce ball court, just gotta bring the balls.
Okay, so the amateurs who walk in and say, wonder what this is, couldn't do anything on it if they didn't have their balls.
Correct, correct.
Thank you, ma'am. Sure.
No, we're happy.
Yes, and bocce balls, you can get them at Walmart for twenty bucks. That's, that's not expensive.
Richard, before you leave, will you do me a favor? Um, can you just give me your contact number?
Yeah.
If you'll just write it on there for me. Kind of if there's any questions and we need some subject matter expertise, I mean, we know who to reach out to.
Okay.
Your big thing on those things is drain each, cause it's flat, it's a flat court. And about their only other use is a putting green for golf. And you don't wanna put holes in it.
Aw, come on.
But, uh, we use one of the tees at the country club and do it on the, the tees.
That's for me.
Well, it's, it's a non-used tee.
Okay. Yes, Kathy.
Adam Chair, could just, couldn't that also be used as, um, horseshoe?
Oh, no, you'll tear the daylights out of it.
I'd ask.
Can't put any goats on it either.
Yeah, if you do, do it with Bermuda, you're gonna have to have certain mowing equipment, but I think our soccer field equipment would be more than sufficient to mow it.
We'll take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you having me out here to speak. You all have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Flavia Walsh.
Thank you. Oh, but she wants to talk about, I guess it's algae.
Hi. Hi, guys, Flavia Walsh, I'm back. I just had sent an email out to, um, Elle. Well, my pond, this was yesterday. Um, this is one week, so. From the last time was full clear. We didn't have this and. I have two different types.
Okay.
The lot, the green, I didn't see that, and then some new one, I actually never seen that, that. White.
Bright green algae?
Yeah, and the new one. And that's all over now. Um. And usually, and here's the other one.
Did Elle get a sample of this?
I know. So usually what happens is that's usually day one. This will happen by day three or four.
By three or four?
Day, day three or four, cause usually if day one will be like that, and this, I think it'll be yesterday at five thirty in the afternoon. This is from three months ago. So it's like a cycle that, you know.
Probably wind driven too, and it goes down to the far end of the pond.
Um, fountains are off, but what I wanted to bring it up is, you know, I wanted to see if we can. Have another treatment to come in and spray. Um, I have, uh, after I left that meeting here on Friday, I went and then I had Aqua Genics. Give me some reports from all the maintenance that they have done. The fountain that was, um, damaged, that they say it was lightning strike. Well, after reading all the reports from Aqua Genics, their own report, cause they managed that fountain. It says, and I provided that to, uh, the C D D, that due to the heavy algae. The motor on that specific fountain was overworking. And that's the fountain that our HOA does not have the funds to replace. So I'm asking, because of those reports that we have, that now the C D D replaces that fountain motor.
There are three fountains, aren't there, Flavia?
Yes, one.
Just one failed?
Ooh, no, two failed.
Two failed.
One is not on because we just didn't turn on, because as you can see, the algae, we're just trying to save it. One Aqua Genic replaced the motor. I don't know who picked up the cost on that, if it was Aqua Genics or the district. The other one, we just decided because we took the word at first at Aqua Genic, there was lightning strike. But after having four vendors look at it and say, there was no way that this was lightning strike. And then after me then asking Aqua Genic for the records and looking at their own records and reviewing and reading it and saying, wait a minute. You are telling me that I'm reading the records and then saying it's algae? Now I'm asking the district to pay for it.
Martin. Question. Uh, did, is Elle aware, Elle is aware of this, correct?
She was just made out aware of it last week when I brought, I made her copies of all those repair.
Do you know, has contact been made to Aqua Genics to ask how this happened?
I have contacted them. I have heard no response. I called them yesterday. I left two voicemails to J J. I spoke with Lynn and I called Lynn and I said, listen, if J J needs time or he doesn't know, just call me and tell me that. And she says he was out of the office. I said, just have him call me. No phone call whatsoever. I sent him an email asking him, why is my middle fountain not working? Because that's what I heard, cause I know it was off per Elle's request. But then I also heard it's not working. And I sent that email on the January ninth. I have no response. I emailed him two days ago on, no response.
Are all of our C D D owned air raiders working? They're all underwater?
Uh, as far as I know, they are.
Those are working.
Working, um.
We should have something from Aqua Genics.
Some, some, some don't look like they're working as powerful as the others. But then I don't know if that's how it just did work, you know?
Well, this is, this is floating material, so it shouldn't have had any impact on the, our air raiders. Now, your fountains, I could see it clogging them up real easy.
I actually.
We're, we're, we've got a point system now that it takes into consideration this type of a thing and there's, there's penalties for it. But this has gotten way too far.[1516.21] But this has gotten way too far. Somebody should have had an analysis of this performed and, uh, find out what we need to do to correct it. Is it a chemical treatment? What, what do we have to do to do it? But sitting there and living with it's not an answer.
April, were you aware of this, or has Elle made you aware of anything related to this?
Um, Pond 83 has always been an issue and pretty much has always been the topic of discussion and trying to find solutions for it. Uh, this particular incident regarding the clarification that Aquagenics is saying it's not a lightning strike, um, as far as the fountain damage, no, I was not aware of that. So I would have to talk to Elle.
Yeah, I think we need a report from Elle.
Yeah, what the status of that is.
Let us get a report from Elle so that we can try and resolve the issues on that lake. I know they've been a problem for a long time, and I know you hate to hear, give us a little bit more time, that, give us a little bit more.
Okay. I do have a picture with the aerators, because. I, 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 I don't think they're all working correctly, because you can see here.
Well, we now have seven.
Yeah. You see, like, there's one that's here, and I don't see the bubbles. You see that one there?
Yeah, you see one there, yeah.
You, you don't, I don't think they're all on.
We're paying, we're paying, we're paying Aquagenics to do that.
And I'm paying them too. And I'm paying them too.
Yeah.
Hey, Flavia, how long have you, um, been discussing this issue with Aquagenics?
Two and a half years with Aquagenics.
She, she should not be doing that. It should not be her responsibility to be doing that. She should be reporting to Elle, and Elle's doing it, and we're on Aquagenics like you know what on you know what. This, this is not acceptable.
But I've been also bringing this up to the district for four and a half years.
And Elle may be getting a runaround. You don't know.
Let us get a report from Elle, and we're, I mean, we're acutely aware that we have issues on 83, and we're not just ignoring them. We're trying to come up with a plan so that we can resolve all of the issues for you.
Hi.
Hey, Abel, can we make sure that we, make sure we have a correspondence, um, by next week, um, to at least know the status of what Aquagenics has told us, um, what the action plan is gonna be? Because again, it's been two weeks since you were here last.
And on, on the painting items, you know, that we have. In which, the three main ones.
Can you, do you have a sanitized bottle, clean bottle?
No, but I can, I can go pick it up at the.
Can, can you get a bottle maybe from Elle, get a sample? At this time, I don't care what clarity, I'd like to get the solids and give, uh, Ernesto a call.
Okay.
And you know Ernesto.
I can just drop it off over there.
Give him a call, tell him what we've got, and see if he'd do us a favor of analyzing what this stuff is, because I've, I've been over there when, taking in samples, people come in with things that are in bottles like, man, where did this come from? Uh, so they've done it before. I think it would be nice to even have as a backup to Aquagenics if they ever get there and do it, to see what Ernesto would say and maybe make a recommendation that we then, uh, insist that Aquagenics, uh, conform with that requirement.
Should we take that? Should we have staff?
No, staff can't do it. It's, it has to be private, or public, public, like.
I can, I can do it. Yeah, I can, I can, I can take a, yeah, I can, I can take a sample now. I mean, I don't.
Just, just make sure that the bottle is not, not tainted. And Elle's got probably a bottle.
I'll pick it one, uh, one now, and then I'll do it tomorrow, and I'll drop it off.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
And take those pictures.
Oh, here.
Ernesto will want to see those pictures.
I'll print someone for him. I'll drop that off. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Flavia.
All right, bye. Anyone else?
No, that's it.
All right, then I will move on to, I don't think we have anybody here from Stony Brook or P-PAC, so that lets those reports, those go pretty fast, so. I won't, um, she's, she's next, and I will allow her to introduce herself. She's here. District Council is up, so please introduce yourselves, everyone who are here on Tony's behalf today, because he couldn't make it.
Yes, my name is Lenore Breakfield. I'm an attorney with Woodward, Pierce, and Lombardo, and I am here in place of Tony, and he should be here at some point, but he had a conflict with the hearing. So I'm the pinch hitter in for today.
And do you have anything that you wanted to bring to our attentions again? Did he leave you any instructions?
Uh, what he did tell me to report was that we had our meeting on Monday with the business manager and Madam Chairperson to discuss workflow, and we felt like that was a good and productive meeting, and we've come up with some strategies for, um, prioritizing assignments and reporting back. And that's all he asked me to report today.
All right. District Engineer.
Hello.
Hello.
So for the record, my name is Tyler Wainwright. I'm with Tetra Tech. So, um, a couple of things, just like to give you guys an update on tonight. Uh, biggest thing we've been working on lately is the Lake Bank Restoration Project, so that is currently out to bid. We had the pre-bid meeting, uh, on Monday, and we went out with the contractors and walked all the lakes that we'll be working on, went through all that, thought it went pretty well. Um, the bids for that are going to be due next Friday. So the plan is to receive bids and then bring them back to the board on the next meeting, I said, the 16th, for a recommendation of award.
Was that the, when you said you walked the lakes, was that the first five that you did?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
No? All right.
So other than that, um, the next thing that will be going out is, uh, the separate material procurement. So Gateway wanted to buy the material separately directly, so that'll be advertised hopefully on Monday. And then that one will be due the following Monday, uh, so the plan is to do the same thing, bring that back for a recommendation of award at the 16th meeting, so the material and the contractors will all be in one shot, and then, uh, hopefully we'll get started the first week in March.
Question, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, Tyler, as part of your recommendation to buy this material and bulk, are you gonna have a recommendation to purchase or otherwise acquired, uh, containers to store it in?
Yes, sir. I believe that Mr. Schumacher's been working on, uh, getting some containers to store it in. I think the plan is we're gonna get five, um, eight-by-forty shipping containers, and I don't know if we got a exact place figured out where we're gonna put them, but maybe out here. Uh, maybe I'll let Chris answer that better than I can, but yes, sir, we'll be storing them in some containers, and we've discussed access with the contractors, and we think we got a pretty decent plan.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Might indicate that, uh, we are not doing the pre-qualified, uh, contractors anymore. We had a public deal, and it was a mandatory pre-bid, so what did we end up having? I lost count. Seven, eight, nine actual contractors?
I think people that are actually gonna bid, I think we got six.
Six.
Um, Aquagenics showed up. I don't think they're really gonna bid it. So I think we got six people that are actually gonna bid for.
So we're limited to those six?
Yeah, for various legal reasons, uh, we didn't end up using the pre-qualified contractors. So, um.
Am I what?
Are you comfortable with the, with the six?
It is what it is. I am comfortable that a couple came in that had been recommended to us by outside people that showed up. Uh, one local, one from, where's Edens from? They were up north someplace.
Edens was the one that Joe DiCervo recommended, right?
Joe DiCervo recommended it, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure where they're from.
I think they're up in the middle of the state, up in that area, back in the woods, I believe, but, uh, they showed up, but.
So we have pre-qualifying, and then in the bid meeting, we have additional public, um, those.
We just dropped the pre-qualification, and it was whoever showed up this meeting is now on the, on the table. Did we have, that's a good question, did we have any of the pre-qualified no-show?
Yep, MCG. They didn't show up.
MPG?
MCG, uh, Marine Con- Marine Contracting Group.
Any feedback from them as to what happened?
No, I didn't talk to them. I sent them the, uh, invite before the meeting, and they said, yeah, we'll see you there, but they didn't show up, so I'm not sure if they're just too busy or, I'm not sure. But three of the four pre-qualified showed up, and then I think we got three others that plan on bidding. The, the three others that showed up, um, the two that I know, they're, they're pretty reputable contractors, and I don't have any issue with either of those. Edens, I don't really know.
The, the one thing that I was pleased with as we started the meeting out is that, uh, how many of them were familiar with SRF requirements and all the EEO civil rights and all, da-da-da-da-da, requirements, and there wasn't an issue on that whatsoever, so.
You mean they didn't see anything?
No, they all indicated, they all indicated in the affirmative that they were familiar. Uh, what you don't like is a blank stare on that, because somebody's in for a rude awakening. But it, it went real well. I thought the pre-bid meeting was very good.
And, and just so I'm clear, uh, so the individuals that did not participate in the, in the pre-qual, is there any additional due diligence we will ask of them prior to selection?
They're out.
No, you're talking about the ones that were not pre-qualified but are bidding, the, the extra three. They, so we put in the bid documents, um, sort of the same thing that we put in the original pre-qualification package and just said, you know.
So we'll be, at the end, we'll have.
Yeah, we said that, you know, you've gotta have substantially similar experience and, you know, must have been in business this long, and it was a lot of the same thing that ended up going in there. And I really can't tell you the legal reason why we ended up not being able to use the other one, but for whatever reason, we weren't able to, so.
That's okay. I just want to make sure that we're, at the end of the day, we, we still end up with, uh,
I think, I think the only question that came up that was a curveball to me on this type of a meeting was the issue of, what do they call that? The insurance for boat, longshoremen's insurance. In other words, if somebody is going to have a barge out there and somebody in the community, while the dock, or the barge is docked, or let's say the barge is being used, somebody decides they're gonna go for a joyride or wanna hop on the barge, falls and drowns. Apparently, there's something of a longshoreman's insurance liability on that. I, that's your guy's deal. If you think you've gotta have one to protect you. But it might not be something bad for the CDD to make sure that if it happens on one of our jobs, we're covered on it. I've never heard of it before. I've not done anything of this nature.
They, you had a contractor that was trying to spook other contractors with that comment.
Is that what it was?
For one thing, even if you applied for longshoreman insurance right now, you wouldn't get it for six months, so regardless of if you think you need it or not, you ain't getting it for this project.
Okay.
But, uh, there's, I mean, I, I guess you can ask your legal counsel if you think that's a necessary insurance, but my opinion was that that was one contractor trying to spook another.
Did, did you talk about, um, whether there was any that would bid multiple, multiple lakes?
We did. A lot of people expressed interest in four of them. One of them.
The field trip.
Well, one of them is a challenge.
I'm sure there's probably a couple that, who might steer clear. If you take this one, you have to take this one.
One, one eighteen scared them.
There's, there's one that, um, I, I don't know how many bids you're gonna get on it. It's a, it's a tricky lake.
That's gonna be a tricky lake.
Well, that's, that's something when you think about how.
It's gonna be a tough one.
You know, it's, it's an advantage of the whole bidding, you know, individually versus bidding the whole thing. If you're making the whole thing, they got to, right? If you give them the choice, you know, the hard one, they may not, or you may get a high price, and.
Yeah, trouble is with that, you get a real high price. You gotta rebid to get rid of that bad deal, but
So we'll.
There were several that were worried about one eighteen.
You know, we'll, we'll see how they come back, and once we get the numbers, I guess we can evaluate it, and, you know, you don't have to award it this time around.
That's right.
You're not, you know, I mean, it's not insane you have to award it if the prices come in too high, so.
That's correct.
We'll evaluate it once we get the prices and see how it goes.
Last, did we get the weight scale determination for the?
Yeah, civil heavy, yep.
Great.
Yeah, it'll be, the denim that's going out tomorrow with the access easements and all that, that'll be in there.
Great.
Um, that's all I have on lakes. You got any other lake questions for me? Okay, so a couple of quick updates real quick. Uh, out in Pelican Reserve, um, roadway paving, so all the way at the end of Pelican Reserve Boulevard, uh, Palazzo, I believe it's called, last community there?
Beadonna and Plaza.
Beadonna and Palazzo, so, um, I don't know how familiar everybody is with the roadways out there, but there's like a cul-de-sac all the way at the end, which is the end of the CDD responsibility for roadway, and then past that, there's some condominiums that are, it's a private road for those condominiums. Um, WCI went out and did the final lift of asphalt on that last section. And then, uh, the folks just before that in, uh, Beadonna are now saying, hey, we'd like to get final lifted too.
Yes, we got a few phone calls about that.
Yes, sir. So if you recall, maybe a month ago or so, uh, we had talked about it, I think it was Supervisor Newbauer, I guess it must have been two months ago. He had mentioned that, uh, the CDD didn't want to, uh, deal with final lift in that area until the construction in Palazzo was done. But, um, I don't, I don't know if the boards changed their mind on that, if we wanna continue doing that. We're looking into getting pricing on doing the final lift in that area so we can come back and give you a little more info in case that is something you want to undertake.
May I? Four years ago.
Yes, sir.
Plus or minus. Danny Nelson stood at that podium while we were discussing whether we were gonna put the final lift on Pelican Reserve Boulevard and told us in no uncertain terms that we had to put that final lift on because what was there now was in no way designed to withstand, uh, truck and automobile traffic.
I remember that.
Correct.
And we went ahead based, not only on that recommendation, but mostly, we went ahead and, uh, put that final lift on, and uh, if things have changed and you do not support Danny's recommendation, I'd like to know about that.
Um, I mean, I think what he said was right. I mean, the area that we did final lift back in 13, I guess it was, um, that part needed to be final lifted. I mean, you had a lot of traffic on a road with not a lot of asphalt. So there was a need to do that, and I definitely, I mean, I, I still say that was the right thing to do. The last area we're talking about right now is all the way at the dead end of the road, so not as much traffic. I don't know if you have a need to do it right now. It's a little bit different situation, because you don't have as much people accessing that portion of the road. So a little bit different circumstance, but.
How about the people who live there that think they're being short-sighted when?
Well, that's the thing. They're the only people that don't have a final lift now. So, uh, you know, visually, it's, it's definitely gonna look a lot nicer once you get that final lift down. As far as structural concerns of the asphalt, yeah, more asphalt's always better for structural reasons, so it's definitely something that you could and possibly should undertake.
Can, can the, uh, can the, uh, construction, uh, traffic be rerouted to avoid that?
No.
So they put it on, they're gonna use it.
But, you know, me and Danny talked about this, and, you know, what we ended up saying was, well, hey, they're driving over all the final lift on Pelican Reserve to get to the dead end anyway, so what does it matter if they drive over that last little piece? I mean.
Is, is that the, uh, is that the reason why you would not do it is potential damage through the final construction phase?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That was, so, two months ago or so when we talked about this, that was the concern Supervisor Newbauer, he said, hey, you know, they're still doing construction right there. Let's wait to do the final lift.
Just keep a watch on the load limits.
But still be waiting?
I mean, if the decision is to wait until construction is done in Palazzo, that may be 10 years from now. I mean, it's, it's, it's slow build. It's not a high demand for that area.
Madam Chairman, uh, do we need a motion of some sort to tell them to get with it and build and, and put that final lift in?
If you wanna make that motion, go right ahead.
I would indeed make that motion.
I'll second it for discussion. Who, who's asking for it? The, the PP?
Um, I think we've been getting requests, and I think Gateway staff have been getting requests from people out in Pelican Reserve, so we've been looking into pricing for it. I just wanted to let you all know, hey, it's something we're working on.
Is this gonna be paid for by construction bond money?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If, if it's, if it's being endorsed by them and that's their desire, then I definitely second it.
So this is, this is the, the desire of P-PAC? Is that correct?
When the people that are living in that area, they have to drive on the road.
I can't, I can't, I can't answer that. I, I'm not, I'm unaware of what their official determination is.
Is that something, um, that you would consider in, in your motion to, would it be, would it be prudent for us to, to have a
Condition?
A condition in that, that it's approved by P-PAC?
Yeah, I go with that.
I understand where you're coming from, and, and the prior question is, are we gonna let our advisory committees dictate to us?
I just don't want them coming back and second guessing us.
Well, and, and my whole point is, and again, Bill, you're, I mean, you live in that community, you have an ear to the ground over there, um, you know, when there is, when there's a district priority, uh, I think we're in the driver's chair. When there might be a vote of public opinion, uh, it might be just due diligence to get their, their input, um, that was my only concern. So I'm, I'm fine either way. Um, I don't know what precedent we have in the past for this type of decision.
I think if that's the only section that it doesn't have a final lift, that it did, it just seems as though we should go ahead and do it.
There might be some in the neighbor, on the neighbor, in the neighborhood streets that aren't being able to file, like Matarita Two and.
Yes, sir, like in the new construction area off Cypress Grove, yeah.
As far as the main roads are concerned, I believe that this little spot, this little patch is the only one that doesn't have the final, and if for no other reason than to, to, to treat our residents in a fair and equitable manner, I think we oughta go ahead and do it.
And we're just talking about that area, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And at this point, just so you know, I mean, we were bringing it up just telling you, hey, we're going out looking at pricing, and we expect to get those prices and come back and say, here's how much we expect and all that, so this is, uh, I guess, step one.
Yeah, go ahead. Can we say, can we vote in favor of having them go ahead and get the pricing, if it's in line, go.
Is that your motion?
Yes, please.
I second it.
And that's your second?
Does anybody want to talk about this?
So Tyler, it's, it's, it's Tetra Tech's position that you were, you're getting pricing. This was an awareness, and you'll bring that, I mean, I would imagine the next board meeting, you would bring it back for, for, uh, for the vote of approval. That was your plan?
Yes, sir. To be honest with you, I wouldn't expect you to make a motion today. I was expecting to tell you, hey, we're going to look for pricing, and we'll come back when we have it. So that, that's kind of what we're planning on doing.
Accomplish the same thing.
Okay, I'll call the vote.
I'll look.
Bye.
Bye. Because Darian's listening. P-PAC did make a motion to do. Is this, uh, Beadonna?
Beadonna, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so there is a recommendation from people.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. What date is that, please?
You trying to find that, Stephen?
Oh, February, this is only February 2nd. I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna embarrass you.
I think you just.
It must be, it must, must be January 12th. Thank you.
Is it in the, is it in the? I know, but they have reports of it too. Oh, it's January, okay, this is December.
Yeah, that's, that's not it.
But they've, they've requested it, and we've given direction to them to go for pricing, so I think we've handled that.
Go with it.
Anything else, Tyler?
Um, no, ma'am, I think that's it until we get down to the school one later.
Till we get down to the what?
The item five B. So we can talk about the school later, but that's it for, uh, staff report, I suppose, sir.
Any objection of bringing a school one forward, so?
No, I've got two other ones for Tyler also, so let's just hit them all off. Get them all done.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Get comfortable up there.
We'll start, yeah, mine, 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 mine are pretty easy. Uh, one of the things that we have as a requirement with our contract with, uh, Lee County Utilities is that we have to provide them an annual update on the projections of flows. I've gone through and, uh, enumerated a list of vacant properties here in Gateway. Who was the last one, or were you guys the last one to put together the last updated, uh, estimate, estimate of the flows and our demands for water and sewer pursuant to that agreement? And how did you address those 12 or 15 vacant properties? 18 vacant properties.
I don't know if I can give you a right answer, because I have not. I know I have not, but I don't know if Danny has done that before, before my time.
We need to check on that, because we're, we've, we've been delinquent in that contract of getting it, and we need to know it for ourselves because of some of the issues going on over at the wastewater treatment plant. And what it is, is that our contract requires us to give them an update as to what our plans are for future usage of water and sewer, and so we have to convert ERUs to flow and see where that goes, and it's most important in that if we're talking about some changes or, uh, renegotiation of that contract, I want to make sure that we're negotiating from a knowledge of what we actually need, not what they think we need, because we don't wanna pay for more than we need.
What contract specifically are you referring to?
The, the agreement we have with the, the 2033 agreement that we have with, drop dead date, 2033, with Lee County Utilities, yeah, water and sewer.
It's very important, too, in conjunction with this, uh, proposed development to the south that, uh, is.
East. East. Timber Creek.
Huh?
Timber Creek.
No, 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 the 577 acres down there by.
Yep.
It's Timber Creek.
Yeah, Timber Creek is what.
East, yeah.
It used to be called the Fountains, now they're calling it Timber Creek.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, that, we can get back, or if you can get back to us on that one, and then.
Yes, sir.
Mentioning Timber Creek, there's some documentation in the, uh, uh, board book about some letters, and I don't know if Chris put those in or what, but a meeting was held, a site visit back in February of 2016, about a year ago. And there's some discussions going back and forth on Timber Creek. Are you familiar with, with that? And it, it almost looks like they are, for lack of a better term, ignoring us.
Worse.
Or worse, thumbing a nose at us.
Yes, that, that was.
And my deal is, is that I thought the request or the, uh, And my deal is, is that I thought the request or the, uh, the reason this was in was to get input from the board as to what do we wanna do about it?
Um, I'm not sure which, what you're talking about here.
I know, I saw it. I don't think I was dreaming. Uh-
I think I know what you're talking about. I just wanna make sure I'm responding to you directly.
April. It was, no, it was in the board book. No, one separate email. It was a, there you go. That's it.
Which one of the? Lennar Homes.
And then I think it goes on down and I-
Do you know what page that is?
Sent the letter.
This is page-
Keeps on going and it says some- If you go to the bottom of it, I think it's asking us for what do we wanna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, here you go. There. I've, I've got a lot of issues when it comes to stormwater and that group over there.
So, okay, I'll let Chris do his deal here, but I'll give you what I know.
Okay.
Uh, Lennar is developing that parcel. It's six hundred plus or minus acres. I think he said five eighty-eight or whatever it is. Um, it used to be called the Fountains way back in the day. They were gonna develop it. Now they've changed the name. Now it's gonna be called Timber Creek. I think maybe six months ago, we came and gave you an update and said, hey, we met with the people from Lennar. Their engineer, who is Morris DePue, we sat down with them, we discussed concerns about them conveying water. All of their, or the majority of their stormwater is gonna convey through Gateway because that's how their flow historically goes. That's how Gateway was, once upon a time, back in the eighties, planned to do. They were planned to accept that flow and keep it moving. There's some issues with that, though, about the individual developments that have happened later, like Daniels Preserve, um, Timber Ridge, the different communities that are going to make up those little conveyances that we need to work out with them before they start pushing water our way. So we've been trying to work with the developer and with their engineer over the last couple of months. Not a whole lot of success because they're still in their planning phase and they don't really wanna share a whole lot of information with us at this point. So I think in, what was it, December, we went to Water Management? In December, we had a meeting with, uh, South Florida Water Management, Lennar, and their engineer to try to hash some of this out. Uh, it wasn't very productive at the meeting. They're, they're sort of still at odds with the concerns of Gateway. So where we're at in this whole process is Lennar is applying for a permit with South Florida, what's called an ERP, which is an environmental resource permit. That's kind of their step one to development. Um, so Gateway has expressed their concerns to South Florida, and South Florida's been very cooperative with us as far as relaying those concerns back to them and putting questions in their, uh, their REI, their permit denial letters, you know, expressing Gateway's concerns. So they, they've actually had our backs pretty well in this one. But we're working with them still to address those concerns and that's kind of where we're at.
April, could you scroll back just a little bit on this? There's two sentences that really bothers me because they're contrary to what I've been hearing coming out of the meeting. At this meeting, we raised concern about water quality and quantity coming from this project. It was noted that stormwater infrastructure was not sized to handle the additional flow from outside Gateway. I'd heard one time, in fact, talking to, uh, Bill, uh-
Bill Morris?
Bill Morris, that, oh, yeah. In fact, we were over at a Lee County meeting. And he says, oh, yeah, all that's taken care of. Now, that's a big, big difference between it's all taken care of and it's not sized to handle it. That's my concern is, is that this thing gets down the road and they're gonna try to dump ex-CFS of water on us and it goes into one to a location that we don't want it. I'm very concerned about it being dumped into a wetland, flowing through a wetland then into our ponds, which has the possibility of creating water quality issues for us below that. And it's in a basin that we've already had historically when we've been doing our sampling, Basin Five, the south end, has historically had the largest problems of non-compliance with the, our pond standards. So the last thing we wanna do is to make that worse by introducing that. But if they pipe it, then the question is raised, are the interconnection pipes from lake to lake to lake to lake large enough to handle this additional flow? All those things they were saying, Bill Morris was saying, is, is that Johnson took that into consideration when Gateway was built. Everything I go back to-
And like everything else.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, here's the-
Got some land out there in the swamp to buy. Yeah, I went to check the stormwater management plan and then not a word was said in nineteen eighty-nine about that six hundred acres. Not a word. So I, I'm not believing this yet.
Here's the deal, that's-
I think somebody's trying to pull the wool.
That, that is essentially what we're, the big part of what we're arguing about right now is. The original, original permits, so back in nineteen eighty-five, I think, when Gateway had their original conceptual permit with South Florida, it did plan for a portion of that area to convey through Gateway. They just used the blanket, uh, thirty-five SCFM per acre and just said, you know, this many acres, this much flow. Now, what that means is, I'm pretty confident that your flowway is sized to handle that. I'm pretty sure your outfall, out into Six Mile, is sized for that. But I'm very, very skeptical that as the years progressed and individual developers came in and bought up tracks and developed them, like Daniels Preserve specifically, 'cause that's where they're gonna dump all the water into. I shouldn't say that, that way. That's where their point of connection to the Gateway system is going to be. I'm very skeptical that those areas were sized to handle those flows specifically. Because if you look at it with like a walkover here on the map-
You mean the upper ends.
Right, so here's this area.
Yeah.
At the time of the nineteen eighty-five conceptual permit, they were sizing the flowway and they were sizing out here. They weren't sizing this community, this community, this community, this community, this community. So that's what we're trying to work out with the developer and their engineer is those, that specific point of connection is that area sized to handle your flows that are gonna convey.
Well, the other thing I read on that management plan that has me concerned is, is that it mentioned specifically, I believe, three hundred and thirty CFS peak for Gateway, three thirty. Is that inclusive of this or not? Because there's been some times on our flows that we're getting way up there when we've been measuring during wet weather periods, like last year it was twenty-two inches over the weir, uh, at Six Mile Cypress. You're, you're getting some pretty healthy numbers. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page that, and it may be that the one that we have to ask this question of, because they did everything, is get Johnson Engineering in here and put them on the hook. Not, no research, just show us that you took that into consideration when you did the design. Put them on the hook.
And we're not, I mean, you know, at this point, they, they've got a party getting sold. I mean, Morris DePue is a very competent, I mean, they're a very competent firm. And we're just trying to work out with them so that all the parties have their concerns addressed ahead of time. So we'll work it out, but we're in the stages of doing that now. So that's, that's where we're at.
I'm just concerned who they're getting their payment from.
Well, I can't address that concern, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Tyler-
Is there?
You're gonna find out pretty quick that I don't have a good grasp on all of this stuff like you do, like Ed does for that matter. When this Timber Creek is in the process of construction or all built out, we're talking about how many homes? Seven, eight hundreds, thousand?
Thirteen fifty, last I saw.
I'm pretty sure their proposal is two houses per acre, so, yeah. Twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, somewhere in there.
Thirteen hundred, it's whatever.
Number one, there are, there are not, there are not a whole lot of alternatives as to where the water's gonna go. It's gonna end up down- It's gonna end up down, going down, uh, our flowway, is it not, sooner or later?
Um, a good portion of it is, yes, sir. They're, they're required to maintain a portion of it on site, which is, which, what their plan is showing, and there's a portion that is going to convey. And that's, that's essentially what we're working out with and is, is how much is going to be retained and how much is going to convey and, and where it's going to go. Yes, sir.
Uh, is there any money in this for us?
Man after my heart.
It's unlikely.
That's what I'm looking for.
Um, no, sir, I mean, there's, there's, um, I mean, they're, they're not within the CDD boundary, so, I mean, they're, they're not gonna be adding any, they're not gonna be paying assessments, I mean, there's, no, the answer to your question, no.
That's my concern is, forget the capital cost. Where I'm concerned is, is we're picking up the tab for the operation and maintenance costs associated with maintaining stuff that they're dumping water into, and it could be as much as ten percent of our total flow.
Well, I mean, you know-
That bothers me.
Something I guess to keep in mind is here. Everyone upstream dumps on the person downstream. I mean, that happens all throughout Florida. I mean, Gateway discharges two parties downstream from Gateway. I mean, it's no different than any other upstream land. I mean, that's how flow works through the state of Florida and anywhere else in the world, for that matter.
Yeah, but I'm not worried about the rest of Florida. I'm worried about Gateway.
So we're-
On this, we agree.
Like I said, we, we are working with their consultant, and they have a very competent consultant who does us for a living, and they're, they're, they're pretty good engineers.
The name of, is what?
Morris DePue is their name. And I'm-
That's part of the old Morris Riley?
No, sir, they're different, uh, totally different firm. Just happened in-
Bill, Bill Morris was on our water advisory committee here in Gateway.
Oh, okay.
They're, uh, so I'm confident that it will get worked out, but we are in the phase of working out the details now, which is sometimes an unpleasant phase.
Yes.
And we're, are we having to pay you to do that work?
Yes, sir, you're incurring fees from us.
As I said a moment ago, there's gotta be some money in this for us.
The, the problem was, when this was originally done, you had the fox and the hen house. We're now having a different situation. We're controlling somebody else that's coming in and we can speak for ourselves. So we could keep an eye on it, monitor, and that's why I bring it up. I'm, I'm concerned as to what they're trying to do, but more importantly than anything is that statement there that I, I guess Chris has some basis of saying it, is it was not sized to handle the additional flow from outside Gateway. That's either a yes or a no. It was, it was or it wasn't.
Are we gonna be, if I may continue?
Go ahead.
Uh, are we, Gateway, are we gonna be responsible providing any of their potable or irrigation water or anything coming from?
No, sir, the, they'll, they're in Lee County's franchise utility area, so they're going to get, uh, water and wastewater from Lee County. And then their irrigation, I believe they're planning on, uh, withdrawing from, on site, just from the lakes and wells, I think. I'm not positive about that, 'cause they're, I'm, they're going to be served by Lee County, not by Gateway.
Thank you.
So I have two questions, Tyler. One, uh, do we have any leverage?
Yes, um, I mean, you have various forms of leverage, yes. You can always issue a permit challenge if they do get a permit issued from South Florida, which is probably your biggest point of leverage. Um, but the South Florida's been, they've been very much on our side, or at least have our backs in this, as far as expressing our concerns to them.
And then, two, um, do you think it's just they're being resistant or whatever the word you wanna use? Because they're trying to address the issue or they're just early on and they're in the process, and why would-
Save money.
They've got a lot of battles on their hand, and Gateway is just one of them. They're, they're in something called the DRGR area, which is a whole separate conversation to get into, but, but they, they have to go through the county to get zoning approval and development order approval, which is probably a lot bigger fight than what they're gonna have with us, so I think that's probably their-
I was just, you know, wanted to make sure what leverage we had, and two, what would be the resistance?
Yeah, Margaret, a good point on that, and this, this bothers me with the way Florida does this, and maybe it's just you bend over and kiss it goodbye, but if indeed we designed into this, we being Johnson Engineering and Westinghouse Gateway Communities, in nineteen eighty-six, designed into this and incorporated into our original drainage plan, that was, created this whole way of we're doing our billings and assessment. That means all of us in Area One of Gateway picked up the tab on that original bond issue to pay for their infrastructure through our community. Now, how is that fair and equitable? Somehow, some way, the people of Area One that paid for that original sixteen million dollar bond that just up to about eight years ago, we've been paying, we finally got out from underneath that nightmare, we paid for that development. Now, what, how do we get, this isn't personal, it's business. How do we get it back?
Well, I mean, keep in mind that, okay, so back when Gateway was-
If we did oversize.
Back in Gateway, it was nothing but farmland. That water still flowed through Gateway. I mean, it flowed through Gateway since the land was formed and water flowed. So, I mean, all Gateway did when Gateway went into development was they continued to handle that flow through Gateway.
To- totally understand, Tyler. Q equals CIA when it's agricultural land is El Zippo. More water goes into the ground and evaporates than comes our way. But you go over there and put down fifty percent of that, sixty percent of that area is blacktop, impervious surface. I don't care whether you retain it or not, there's more water that's gonna come this way.
Well, that's part of what they have to do with South Florida, is they have to prove that-
They have to prove that.
What they're going to convey is no more than the historical what has conveyed.
Okay, we're-
So they would be required to retain the rest.
I just wanna make sure that we don't agree to something until the answers of all these questions and money, because at this point in time, Lennar got us once. Shame on us. Ain't gonna happen twice.
And on this, on this memo, uh, Chris, I'm gonna ask you to step up, 'cause just to handle this particular item, there's a recommendation here. So are you still wanting for this recommendation to be considered?
I, I think it'd be a good idea because, you know, I sent him a letter and, you know, got us on the CC and we've been to the meetings, but I think the board to express their concerns would help. And that's really why I was here today. Um, you know, they, they were taking a very adversarial tone, at least not the engineer, but the representative from Lennar.
Which is not surprising to me.
Right, and, um,
Nor me.
We, you know, we were looking at things, I said, so if you're gonna have water come over there, you should be required to do water quality testing before it goes in and address it, the concerns. You should be required to oversize the pipes if that's what needed, so there's no capital cost to the district. And, um, you know, just the, the RAI that went from Water Management District basically was telling them, you need to go in and do a hydraulic analysis of the system in its current state to see what the capability of that system is and what your actual discharge is gonna be, and they're like, we're not doing that. And, uh, so they're trying to stay away from incurring that cost and getting a current number, 'cause I don't think it'd be in their favor.
So what you're asking is for, uh, the attorney to send a letter to South Water Water Management requesting what you just stated, that they do-
We could have the attorney send it. I could draft it and just have the chair sign it, you know, from the board.
And if I may, Tony did ask me to speak on this issue, and he wanted me to convey that. Uh, he has spoken with Chris. He concurs with, um, what Chris's recommendation is and that he will work with staff to do that.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I should move.
Second.
Whoever.
Whoever.
Give it to whomever.
Lady and Red.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and-
That's all I had, other than the school.
And, yeah, to allow us to spring you, let's go ahead and do the school.
Sounds good.
Spring. Shackling.
Find a school real quick. Okay, so-
Question. We have a bid opening, not, ask Tyler this, we have a bid opening next Friday. What's the rules, maybe this is a legal issue, what's the rules of us coming to that bid open?
Well, can I just ask, does more than one board member want to go?
I, I don't know what, I certainly would like to be there, but-
Well, I think if you're it, I think you're fine, right?
But I don't know. Kathy might wanna go, Doug might wanna go, somebody else. I just don't know. It's not a meeting, no actions being taken, but we can be there to listen, can't we?
I think that the concern would be that, um, public business is being conducted, so if you don't mind, I would like to discuss that with Tony before we say. I, I understand there will be no discussion, but it's still, the, it's all about the appearance and with-
What's already, what's already noticed as a bid opening, but the issue is, is does that constitute the type of notice it takes to allow two of us to show up? If not, I can play golf and advise on it, but I, I just was interested in the, that question, 'cause if two of us show up and somebody then files a protest, that's all we need.
Madam Chairman, chairperson, why don't, why don't you just designate one of our number as the person to attend the meeting and negate everybody else?
I think it should be our, uh, board engineer.
He's the engineer. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're likely to get the most information out of the questions that are asked.
Well, I, I like to get good, get good news or bad news real early.
All right.
Um, so the agenda item before you tonight is a plan review approval for a, um, development called Creative World Schools. So this is in the Fairway Lakes Office Park. So we're talking about directly west of, uh, the Griffin Drive intersection back where Rockin's, she's at, that sort of area. At the, was it, I guess, the southeast corner, there is a vacant lot there that they're proposing to put a, a daycare preschool facility at. We have received plans from the developer. We've reviewed them. Um, we're, we're satisfied that they've met the requirements of the permit criteria manual with regards to stormwater and utilities, which is, uh, what we would be reviewing, so. Where we're at in this process is that we've come before you with a recommendation to approve their plans for construction. Um, I know I've talked to some of you individually in, uh, in the future, so kind of separate from this and also with this. You said that you'd like to see the plans in the future for the various permits that we get and recommend, so next time, we'll definitely do that. We'll, we'll put the plans in there so you guys can see those as well. Um, and also, uh, I know Ms. Flaherty, we had talked about in the- Um, and also, uh, I know Ms. Flaherty, we had talked about in the future, when we get, um, these requests in the, the beginning, when people come and submit the first time to us, to share that with you guys and let you know what we're reviewing and what we're working on, so we'll definitely, uh, we'll do that in the future as well. Just so you know, so kind of sidebar here, we've got two others that we're looking at right now. One is a church, and one, I don't know if we've actually received the plans for it yet, but the next one is going to be a, a Gartner expansion, so those are kinda coming down the pipe. Yeah, I'm not sure. Stephen and Gaffey from our office is reviewing the plans, I don't know, maybe Chris knows the site.
You know where the church is, Chris? Where's the church?
I want whole month as a.
There's a new one.
They just dropped off their plans, I think, last week, so.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice to know, because we could come in and look at it, and then, because I saw the comments in the deal, and I thought, these don't mean anything to me without this, so.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, uh, in the future, we'll, we'll definitely put the plans in there, so y'all can check them out, and we'll let you know when they get dropped off the first time, in case you wanna have any input on it, so we'll definitely do that. So separately, this one, um, as far as our engineering concerns with regards to utilities and then stormwater, um, I think we're satisfied. But, uh, if you have any other concerns, certainly open to talk about them and discuss them.
When we.
Yes, go ahead, I'm, I'm.
You can go.
Yes, sir.
When we looked at the plans on the, uh, new Horizon Church, the one that's, uh, has been built recently, New Life Church.
Oh, yeah, yeah, off North and Gateway Boulevard, yes, sir.
There was a lot of concern by the board at that time about the, uh, exit.
Yes, sir.
And how it was gonna work and all of that business. And I've been looking at this just a few minutes, but I can't tell how the traffic is gonna go into the school and come out of the school, and what level grades this is gonna be, and is it gonna interfere with the Gateway School and la da 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 da, okay? Have you thought all of that through?
So, we've had some conversation with the developers as far as their access, um, but, but not really to the point that Lee County would cover in their review when they issue them a development order. Really, when we do our reviews, we're literally looking at the assets that they would convey to Gateway, the assets of Gateways of which they would connect to, things like that. Now, but we have, to answer your question, we have talked to them about that. I believe they've got one access, it's off of Fairway Lakes. So, they, they're proposing to, I mean, use that as their in and out.
Well, there's two. They could go around.
Right, they can go around, I guess.
This is the interest, but this is parking here, right?
Since the road hadn't been turned over and there's no connection directly to Gateway Boulevard, to what extent is Lee County Util, or Lee County Transportation involved, any at all?
I really can't answer that question. Um, I believe, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I think Fairway Lakes is a private road, right? I don't think that's Gateway's or Lee County's.
We're still trying to figure out who owns it.
I don't think, I mean, that was a part of the PUA, or P, what is it, POA?
Yes, it was, it was a POA that dissolved.
So, um, so, I don't know if I can answer that question. I don't know how much Lee County traffic is looked at it. I know Lee County traffic would have concern if they connect to Gateway Boulevard, which they are not.
Bill, did you get your question answered? Did you get yours answered? Margaret, I have, uh, Tyler, when you looked at the, I saw your comments and everything, but I see the line going out to the pond, I think that's one oh seven ninety-three, one of those ponds. Is that line existing?
Yes.
The dash is existing, so am I looking at it right that all of their internal rooftops and parking and everything is coming into a current catch basin? And then going across the street to another catch basin and going to the lake? Does that line design, if going across the road, handle all that?
As far as, uh, quantity, yeah, absolutely.
Quantity, okay.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Uh, one, I, I think it's a terrible location.
That isn't it.
But.
We're good at that. Charter schools.
The placement of this is terrible, um, but my concern is, uh, one, with the traffic, uh, and two, I don't understand, um, what, what their process is for, for drop off, uh, and pickup. And again, I got a little experience with this with four boys, and I've been dealing with drop off and pickup for a long time. So, what I would like to see is a flow diagram and really some information on what their, what their processing procedures are for morning and afternoon, because this, where this is located, in this location, which is one, one of our busiest areas across from, you know, you've got Seven Eleven there, you've got the Griffin intersection. Between, I would imagine, seven thirty and nine o'clock, uh, probably more eight to nine o'clock is gonna be their peak hours, and if their head count is two hundred plus, that's two hundred vehicles that are gonna be turning into that spot, and again, probably from, you know, five to six o'clock, another peak time. I'm just, I have a lot of concerns around the traffic. Um, I'd like to have their engineer, and I don't know if, uh, if, uh, Community Engineering Services or whoever is their engineer, um, if they can provide, um, some, some kind of flow diagram, or just how they plan to, to not only drop off and pick up, but I know that you have to park in some instance, especially during pickup, and that they've got thirty-some spaces, I would imagine they're gonna have probably more than ten or fifteen employees. Well, that's gonna eat in half of their parking space, um, and then you've got parking on the, on the grass, I mean, there's.
Are they anticipating stacking on the road like Charter School does? Because that is a problem.
I don't see how else they could do that.
If they stack on that road, there's just no place to go.
So, their engineer is a CES slash A site. Cynthia, I don't recall her last name, it starts with a Y, that's their engineer. Uh, Mark McLeary is the guy who runs that office. They're, they're in Gateway, they're a local firm, they're right behind Brewery. They've done a lot of work in Gateway. I'm sure that they have, I mean, they've been issued a DO by the county, so I'm sure that they have met all their, the development order requirements as far as providing parking spaces and traffic flow and, um, level service caps and all that sort of thing, so I can't say that. I, I, I can't answer about if they've thought out, you know, where they're gonna stack up cars and where they're gonna queue people out for drop off and stuff like that. That's definitely something we can ask them for, and we can, I mean, if you want, we can have them say, hey, go to the meeting next time, talk to the board.
I, I would like to have either. I'd love to have them, uh, at the next meeting, so we can pose these questions, uh, and then for them to be able to show some responses. Because again, you know, ideally, I mean, and now we're talking earlier, you know, when you come in, looks like if you're, you know, if you come in and you hang that left, the flow should take you in, and ideally, it would take you out the other side, and in the future, hopefully, the, you know, we might have a light there, um, and then you could prohibit left-hand turns coming in, into Fairway Lakes Drive on that side, which would create a little bit better flow. But, the accidents that we've had at that Griffin and Daniels intersection, uh, in the past, coming left, we're just gonna heighten that, uh, that potential on that Fairway Lakes if you're trying to come out left, um, on that side. So, I mean, I just have a lot of reservations around this, um, and would absolutely want them to come back to the meeting, uh, our next meeting and supply a little bit more, uh, due diligence around how they plan to, to manage the traffic flow.
And I think the issue that the CDD is gonna run into is that we can ask the question and we can make requests, but we don't have the right to approve or deny their plans. I mean, that's not part of what we're capable of doing, if that's my understanding.
Well, we maintain that road, so we have some rights on that road.
Yes, we do.
And so we can tell them that there'll be no off-site parking or stacking, and that'll certainly make them change their plans.
I mean, they're, they're, they're a good firm. I mean, I'm sure they would come in here and discuss it with you and say, hey, look, this is our plan, and, and maybe they know something that would, you know, I guess maybe quell some of the concerns. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, I don't know. But, like Margaret said, just keep in mind that, uh, that's a private road that they're connecting to, and the other road's gonna be the county, so I don't know how much, um, ability that you're gonna have on that in the future.
We don't have an answer to that yet. We've taken six of the seven, and I can just bet you a dime right now that we're gonna end up taking that one too for maintenance. And it'll be on our list, because nobody else, there's no other legal entity to take it. They dropped the POA. Now, if that POA existed, I'd say, ali ali ali, I'm free, but that POA's gone, so that means it's gonna be on our nickel. But, so I think we have a, a dog in the fight right now, at least ask questions.
Well, they pointed out there aren't any lights here, maybe.
I would wonder if somebody's gonna bring that up. There's no lights here.
I mean, I agree with you. I see issues with this, but I don't know how much leeway we have to actually.
No, I understand what you're saying.
They just gotta understand our concern.
Yep.
They're, I mean, like I said, they're, they're a real good firm. I mean, have them come in here next week, talk to them about it, maybe there's something they can do to make it more like what Gateway wants.
I think we all appreciate that.
Sounds good, we will do that.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Is it reasonable to assume that this school already owns this property that's, is being discussed right now?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they, they're, they're the property owners, they're, I mean, they have all of their approvals in Lee County, so this is it, to, before they get to go build.
To, to familiarize, this, this one backs up to that new fire station, backs right up to the new fire station that came in a couple of months ago.
Oh, while I'm thinking about it, um, because we're talking about other ones that we are currently reviewing. Right across the street from them, on the south end of that intersection, uh, there's a restaurant being proposed to develop right there also, so, so you know.
Across from where? This?
Yes, sir, to the south.
To the south, on the other side?
Um, that one's gonna be, what are they calling it? Not fat cats, skinny dogs.
Skinny dogs.
Didn't even know about that one either.
Tyler, I think, yeah.
Three meatheads in the kitchen.
My concern, there's forty-eight parking spaces, I counted them.
Okay.
Okay, you have two hundred and fifty students. You, you said this is a daycare preschool, right? And is it gonna stay a daycare preschool and not go up higher? That's my concern, because once you say it goes up, for two hundred and fifty students, why is it, I'm thinking a lot, that's a lot of the daycare.
When you say go up, you mean like into like a elementary school, or?
I'm going into like.
Oh, no, they, um, I mean, they're, they have a specific zoning approval for what they are allowed to conduct business at that site. Their approval is for, I don't know if it's daycare preschool or if they're actually different. I think it's actually a preschool is how they're approved, but that's it. If they wanted to change that, they would have to go back before the county and redo their zoning approval.
And because Brown University is down the street, Brown Academy, yeah, whatever, was a preschool, now it has a kindergarten. So I'm thinking, is this going to kind of build up? That, that's my concern.
No, I mean, they're, they're, they're approved for what they're zoned for, and what they're zoning for is what they're building. If they were to change that, then they would have to go and redo it. I, I'm not real familiar with Brown providing kindergarten, how that would all work out, so I don't know if I can answer that part of your question.
So if they went to, you know, to go beyond the preschool, is there some way that we could stop that? I'm just curious, because that would bring in more.
Is there some way that you could stop that?
Well, maybe, maybe the question is, for, uh, for what they're approved for, what is that, um, you know, X amount aged to technically preschool? Because you've got VPK, uh, and then you've got kindergarten, so I don't know, maybe the question is kinda, where's the cutoff of what they're, what they're approved for today? And I don't know if you.
We just need to talk to them.
I, I don't know if the, so Lee County Land Development Code would be the document that would govern all of this sort of thing. I, I don't know if they have a cutoff as hard as grade goes. I mean, I think just from talking to these people, I think this goes up to VPK. I don't know if that zoning designation goes beyond that.
To kindergarten.
To kindergarten.
Typically, if it's a preschool, it is only going to go through VPK.
But, uh, I guess if your concern is, hey, one day this might turn into an elementary school or, or a K one, two, three, or whatever, um, I think, I'm, I'm fairly sure that they would have to get rezoned, and there would be a public hearing for that zoning approval, so I guess the answer to your question would be, go to the zoning board and say, hey, don't do this, I guess.
We can get the questions answered when they show up.
Lee County School has something to say about that, too.
Margaret, I got another one, too. Why do they have to do a stormwater retention pond when nobody else in that development has one?
Oh, that is such a complicated question.
They got a retention pond down here that all their flow is going into before it comes into our system, and all those apartments are commercial buildings, they don't have anything.
The answer to your question is they don't have to have that. They could delete that. They could. It's a benefit. It's, it's something that's there that is helping your stormwater system that doesn't have to be there.
Well, I realize that, I just was wondering when they were gonna wake up and realize they didn't have to do it.
Well.
Probably when they listen to this.
Open mouth, but easy foot.
So, I don't know if I wanna answer your question past that.
Ten percent getting back at Ben. Well, I, I, just nobody else has it, that's why I couldn't figure out what they were doing.
The answer to your question, they don't have to have that.
I don't know if it would resolve or help their flow pattern, any at all, by getting that additional deal, because they're landlocked on that end, so doesn't help them any.
Anything else for Tyler? Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna move on to the operations manager.
April Wright, your business manager, um, and clearly, I need to change my memo. First of all, do, do you want me to go through each one of these items, or do you have, um, any specific questions?
Specific questions for April on?
On items on the report, I have a couple of additions.
Okay, go ahead. I just was wondering, the two new positions, do you have a total, how many applications you have? Is that an update that you're gonna give us?
Uh, I do not have that available. Um, Chris might be able to speak to the status of, of that, um, but no, I do not have the number that we've received.
Go ahead. I know you said the number six, um, Girl Scout Building, I was wondering if, anything about leasing it instead of buying it?
Yes.
Is in your.
Good question.
They are, they are not interested in leasing. I have, I have verified that.
Is that with the owner or with the realtor?
The realtor checked with the Girl Scouts, and they are not interested.
Realtor and go to the owner. Realtors will tell you what you want, because they want the money and the commission.
The owner's up in.
Sarasota, and we have access to them.
Go ahead. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, and the items on follow-up, is there any chance we can get some kind of, um, follow-up date when you give us the follow-ups? So I'll just, you know, if it's thirty days or sixty days, so I have some concern that, that some of these things have been in follow-ups for a couple of times, but there's no specific dates like. That's it, thank you.
Okay, as, as far as a suggestion, is that what, is that what you're saying? Yeah, because some, some of them do, and others, others of them don't, just depend on workload.
It will take a couple of months to, to finish this, or thirty days to, because we're, the staff is working on the contract, that's been there for a while. But there seems to be no resolution to that, and I would like to say, see, maybe.
Maybe a target, target date.
Can, can you clarify what contract you're talking about?
The first one, just for Manscaped project amendment, I'm just.
Okay, um, yeah, that would just be the renewal date, I believe.
Okay, so, you know, suggested just a target date on, on the follow-ups that, so that even if we don't reach that target date, we know that at least there's something, there's some kind of deadline, thank you.
Okay.
Tony told us at the meeting one or two ago that we were very close, maybe this month, on the roadway turnover, so I've been keeping champagne on ice. The hyacinth is getting right a mill, and I wanna know, so where, when, when this is gonna be finished, any, Lador, you have any idea?
And can you clarify, does this have to do with?
Road turnover?
County or small? This, the city of Fort Myers?
No.
He did not give me any notes on that. I do have a, if there's a question about the contract with the city of Fort Myers for policing, I have a comment on that, but not for takeover, so I will.
Been kinda quiet for a week or two. It's been quiet for a week or two, I haven't heard anything. The, the, the last I heard from Ed Sechelle was that, uh, oh, uh, it was gonna go before the commissioners in February, but nothing can confirm that.
Buy more ice.
Yes, I would buy, I would buy more ice, but what I can't, what I can offer you is that, uh, because of the meeting that was mentioned that we had, um, was that last week or Monday?
Monday.
Monday. That one of the things that we're working on is Tony is going to compile a list of all of the things that he has on his desk, and we're going to prioritize those, um, items, and then we're gonna keep that as a routine process to, um, revisit that list and reprioritize accordingly.
and we're going to prioritize those items, and then we're gonna keep that as a routine process to revisit that list and reprioritize accordingly. So we'll be able to have a better time scope on these, on these issues as far as when they're going to get back to the board.
Tony, Diane just came in and said Tony wanted us to call him, so I'm gonna let her dial him up.
You're the only one who knows how to work.
We must've said the magic word.
I'm in trouble now.
His ears, his ears picked up on it.
It's getting that twitch.
He has a rep while he's talking to drive, and that's not our fault.
Sorry, guys. I've already met my quota.
Hello?
Tony?
Yes?
You are live at the boardroom.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman.
So you're just, you just wanna listen in in case we need to pick your brain for something, is that right?
Yes, just if I could be of any assistance, because I know Lador is there. Just listening for hearing, and I appreciate your consideration of that.
Absolutely, as a matter of fact, your name had just come up. Is there any update to the road turnover to Lee County?
Uh, no. What I will do is, I will John Trubin and find out. I know Ateesh has been kind of bird dogging him, and I'll also give John a call.
Okay, all righty. Then we will move on to anything else that you wanted to bring up. You said you had two new items.
Yes, actually, three updates. First of all, we missed our February first launch of the website. It turned out that when we started reviewing the website, there was a lot more than we had anticipated, and so we are trying to work with the developer, and he's going ahead, and we're gonna have a couple of different layers of training, and so we're in there updating some of the items, and then we have another list of items that he's updating, and so we're gonna try to pull it all together hopefully by next week. He's really excited about getting this completed, so I know that the developer is working hard, as well as staff is here, so. And so I got high hopes on next week for that. And also, I wanted to. There's been an interest in some of the board members to be listed as members of FASD, so you get the email updates. I can add six members, and right now I was hoping that the Public Works Manager and the Utility Manager will have, and myself would have three of those slots. And so I have, Mr. Tinko has expressed interest, and so I've got room for two more members to be registered on the FASD membership. Is there anybody else that would like to receive those updates?
As vice chair, I'll go to you next.
Unless there's another member who would like to particularly.
I think the vice chair should go.
You got it.
You drew the short straw. Okay, and I provided you some information, and I provided you a copy. I sent you an email this last week of the, you had requested at the last meeting the soccer revenue, the soccer complex revenue and expenses, and also the fee schedule. So what I wanted to do is, I wanted to point out, is that document that I gave you, I've also been trying to keep the leagues updated as a cooperative effort to make sure that they are aware of what's being communicated to the board. And so one of the leagues did review that, and we noticed that about thirteen thousand dollars was missing of their revenue, and we have found it, where and how it was misallocated on the statements. So I just wanted to point out to you, if you wanted to make a pencil correction on your documents.
Which document?
Which page?
Page two? Page two? But what agenda, what page is it?
Do you have it in the agenda?
Oh, no, I apologize. Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. I was thinking you were asking for an agenda page. So it would be actually page three. It's the total revenue. The eighteen thousand, three forty-five down at the bottom, that's actually plus thirteen thousand dollars.
So that'll be thirty-one.
It's thirteen plus eighteen?
Yeah, so it'd be thirty-one, three forty-five, yeah.
So the general question of what I was trying to get direction from the board is, based on the expenditures, the net cost of the soccer complex, as I move forward with revising the fee schedule, is it something that you're interested in as far as trying to provide consistent application to the leagues as far as them paying for the lights when they use them?
Let me just add real quick, just so the board knows, just because I have some exposure to the leagues, both Gateway Soccer and Flag has predominantly been running flat as far as their participation from their players. Just to let you know that, based on what I've, what I've seen and what I have previewed to over the last, I don't know, probably almost five years at least with soccer and with Flag Football, the numbers have been relatively flat, so just FYI.
And I thought at one time we were discussing the lighting, was that it was, that this, I'm thinking about years, because we've talked about this over the years, that them paying, the leagues paying for the lighting when they used it was something that we anticipated would happen. So I'm not sure where some leagues pay for it and some don't.
The inconsistencies lie within the fee schedule themselves, or itself. So one of the leagues is charged on Section Five as a training camp, and they pay for their lights, although the usage fee is not applied consistently. And the other, the other leagues are charged under Section Four, or Group Four, and there is, on that fee schedule that the board has adopted, there is no language there indicating that they would pay for the lights.
Yeah, I'm confused on this one, on the capital expense stadium lighting replacement. That must be bulbs or something, because we still have that issue that I brought up at the last meeting that's hanging out.
He's gargling.
The issue of, we have reserved, as I recall, seventy or eighty thousand dollars for the next five years for lighting, but yet again, I mentioned I talked to Bentley Electric, and they feel that the hundred and twenty-five thousand that they have been authorized to spend on two purchase orders is more than enough to get us way beyond that, and the four seventy-fives or four eighties, or five eighties, four hundred thousand, not even necessary.
We could ask for an update on that, too, the last board meeting.
Yeah, we, I think what we need to do is get staff maybe to talk to Bentley Electric and get that squared away, because that certainly is not in here at all as a potential expense in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, if it's necessary, or it's a one-time deal that we, I guess, have already put on the books. Stephen, where is that one twenty-five that we entered into agreement with Bentley on? I don't see that anywhere.
It's not.
Bentley is scheduled to be here on next Tuesday and Wednesday.
We, evidently, it's, they're signing purchase orders, so it has to be somewhere. What account would it be under if it's not this?
Well, it is budgeted, you know, last year and this year, so, but there is nothing, no purchase order or committed money on here.
This is just actual activity.
Where is it? Where would those, that hundred and twenty-five thousand in purchase order for lights?
It would come out of Capital Projects Fund, three hundred.
Okay, so it's, that's where it would be, would show up?
Yes.
As a negative?
Yes.
But we need to get a resolution of that.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you. I agree with Ed and Doug. We need to get a firm handle on this lighting thing, but also you or somebody ought to talk to the sponsors of these youth leagues and find out exactly what they feel comfortable with, and also find out what Lee County and others are charging for similar league play. I mean, I feel like I'm, you know, in the middle of a conversation, and I don't know any, have anything to base anything on.
Okay, so.
When you say sponsors, you're talking about the league, the league management?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I did, I did copy the chair on the email that I sent to the leagues. And so what I'll do is, when I go back to the office, I will forward that email to everybody. So we had a very productive meeting with one of the leagues this week and discuss just that, that our long-term range is we need to learn and on how to negotiate these contracts individually, how Lee County does it, as they do it through their sports development section, and basically, they're looking at negotiating their contracts based on the impact on the facilities. And I'm looking at that as a phase two. I'm looking at some short-term fixes to the fee schedule to be sure that what is intended of the current fee structure is actually being applied consistently.
Hey, Tony, Tony, can you put your phone on mute, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the second phase would actually be, we have, we have to learn how to develop those contracts. And so that would be more of a long-term, a longer-range fix. And that, I think, is where we're really gonna start drilling down on, and I'm anticipating getting the leagues involved in more of a cooperative effort, meeting with them routinely, and strategizing collectively on how to maximize the revenue for the sports complex. They are in the business, and they know what the industry demands, and they appreciate the facility. They think it's a very nice facility. And so we need to work together on making sure that we're providing a service and a facility that is, you know, marketable to their revenue models, and also that we can utilize them as a resource to help us, you know, fill up the schedule and get more activity on, scheduled at the sports complex to drive more revenue.
I think Bill makes a good point on this as far as the, I am concerned that some, somehow, some way, we got off on a tangent on this Bentley deal to do something that's contrary to what we have been projecting on the capital. I guess my question is, is the leagues that use that, are they familiar with what Bentley is proposing, and does that meet their needs? I hate to, yeah, I hate to think that we're spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's a goose chase. Have they been involved in this?
Well, the only thing that I'm anticipating spending is the PO right now that's open for the seventy-nine thousand. The way that I understand it is we're going to get clarification that I think that that will secure the lighting and extend the life of it for probably a good, I think we talked at least another good ten years.
So again, there hasn't been anything for a hundred and fifty that's come through.
There's two POs. I've got copies of them. Two POs, and they are very, very hard to read. Somebody used blue pencil or blue ink or something. It doesn't come through very well, but I believe the two, one was like eighty-five thousand, the other was like thirty-five or forty thousand.
They were the same vendor?
Both to Bentley Electric, yes.
I only have one for seventy-nine thousand open right now.
I'm gonna guess a year plus ago. I think I've got it at home. I'll try to find that, but my question is, is does the people?
I mean, I know there's already been some work done.
I'm sorry?
I know there's already been some work done.
There was some emergency work, right?
Yeah, some things were falling off, and they went in and.
I'm just trying to find out, is if this indeed, like April just said, buys time, and let's get that seventy or eighty thousand dollars out of the budget, and then we're really talking about something that's definitive right now that we know will work and be done with it.
Well, the leagues just want lights, because they, I mean, I think that their only requirement is that there's lights. They have, at least from, you know, my conversations, they're not looking for anything more than what we have.
Somehow we got, somehow we got out onto a tangent for that, I guess, super deluxe stadium lighting, and that was the proposal of one of these big college stadiums. But that's what the budget's based on in the capital.
Yeah.
So we need to get that, get that resolved, because if that hundred and twenty-five or eighty-five or whatever the number is, is sufficient and buys us time, then with that, I think we've got all the information necessary to start doing the analysis you're talking about.
Excuse me, ma'am. Doug, I don't wanna be argumentative, but there's a lot of expense to keep that grass and sod and everything in operation. It's horrible.
Chemicals.
Oh, no, I completely understand that.
And that's what, I guess, we've got one league that's been paying for lighting and two leagues that haven't.
Correct.
So I know it may raise their costs, but I think for the leagues that are using the lighting, I think it should be, it should be level. I think if they're using the lighting, they need to help, you know.
Just get all the facts.
And I'll, I'll say this publicly. The reason why I made the point of telling the board that participation in those leagues have been flat over the past couple of years is to set a stage that, you know, they're not, we're not gonna retain additional revenue by the leagues getting bigger. There's a limited amount of space, and both, probably soccer is at their capacity for the most part, and Flag has some room to grow, but it's, those numbers have been the same, so unless something drastic happens, you might see twenty-five to fifty, you know, fluctuation, but the leagues aren't gonna get that much bigger. So in order for us to continue to pay for and fund, and I will tell you, the fields that we have here are some of the best in the county. And my kids play on all the field, so I know. So we've got a really nice piece of land over here. But in order for us to continue to maintain, because cost of maintaining does increase, I would not be opposed to having the leagues cover the lighting. And to me, I think it falls back more on our parks and recs individual, the supervisor or manager, whoever we have in that role, part of their responsibility should be, you know, maximizing revenue potential, driving, you know, different efficiencies and cost saves and trying to fill that gap between payment. And I will say this, I mean, we tax for our amenities, so there is a certain amount that is taxed to every individual. Whatever that amount is, should cover the amenity for the maintenance or whatever. Either the revenue that's generated either goes to offset that cost, so let's say, I'm just gonna throw a ball, a hundred thousand dollars. Let's say if it's a hundred and fifty to maintain it annually, if we can get fifty in revenue, we take that off the hundred and fifty, so we tax it a hundred. If we're not doing that, then the revenue that's generated is what we use to fund capital improvement projects or to fund maintenance and those types of things. I think we just really need to understand what our position is, because I know that it's difficult in the past to replace playground equipment or to make some enhancements, because the property does cost quite a bit to maintain. So I think we just have to do a better job of managing our budget, figuring out how we're going to fund additional improvements, whether it's just out of capital or it's from the revenue. And we really need, in your reorganization model, I would put part of that, that parks and rec responsibility is to drive efficiency, come up with a cost model that is going to allow us to better fund those fields moving forward. Because I think the position, at least for the majority of the board that's been here for a while, you know, supporting the youth programs and these amenities are, is something that this board wants to do. I'm not gonna speak for Ed and Kathleen, because they're new, but the three previous members, that is something that we felt very strongly about. But we also have to make sure that we're charging the right amount.
Correct. I agree with that.
I agree with everything you said. I just want everybody to understand that the soccer program and the benefit that the youth get from that is almost indescribable, is what the level of that benefit is. And we're never gonna be able to charge what it costs to run and replace those lights and keep that sod in good condition so that people don't trip and fall, da-da-da-da-da. But as you so eloquently put, we need to do a much better job of categorizing and those expenses and understanding what it is we're paying for.
Absolutely.
Stephen?
I mean, I can at least answer the budget question if you want, in terms of how the assessments are generated. I mean, all of the assessments we've been met of the budgeted revenue for from the. I mean, all of the assessments we can net of the budgeted revenue for from the soccer, so there is nothing extra. You know, so anytime we assess and general fund, it's net of this, this revenue that you see on this paper.
Anybody else have anything, one night?
And.
Anything else from any other item?
Before we get off of that subject, I will, I will let you know that, you know, I've, I've been keeping the leagues involved in this and they understand that there are significant costs and they are willing to participate, cooperate, pay more. They under, they understand that. The only thing that they, they ask so far is just to provide any increases timely. And so I've been keeping them very much in the loop as far as, you know, to, to allow them to be able to anticipate that in their next revenue models. And, you know, they enjoy the facility, they complement the facility. I know one league has commented that the lights are great as is, as far as, you know, just what they're providing, that it's adequate. And so I think we're just looking at it from more of a maintenance, you know, just to make sure that everything is, the integrity of the lights is sound. And then I will just also, one more note. Apparently there was a, an agreement at some point in time, just so we understand that occasionally the lights won't be paid for by the fee schedule. And there has been a request and I told them that I would clarify it, that they do like to turn on the lights at field one just for the safety of the patrons moving in and out of the complex from the school parking lot because they have made an arrangement with the school for overflow. And so that is something that unless there's any objections, I intend to tell them that that's okay to continue to do.
I have no objection. Anybody else have objections?
And I would just, one thing I would just convey back is make sure that when they're, when they're, when league is in use at night, that they need to ensure that the playground lights are on.
Yeah, when we, we see these numbers, it's very difficult to put them in context that you can answer somebody's question. I'd like to see what the total cost of operating this is, less what we're receiving as revenue and divide that by the total number of ERUs. You know, big numbers like this, Bill, when you divide it by seven thousand ERUs. It comes out, you know, a dollar two ninety-eight. Like, we're, we're getting our mouths in an uproar. But if on the other hand, it's fifty dollars a month, then there's reason to be excited about it. We need to know those numbers. I, I wouldn't have a clue if I tried to guess right now what the number is.
Yeah. That's a good point.
Certainly. I've been requested to have a five-minute break.
Fantastic.
Line forms at the rear. What was Tony doing?
I'm not sure.
I don't even know what that noise was. I thought he stopped at a public restroom or something.